Good evening. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on Wednesday, February the 21st, 2024. I am Select Board Chair Eric Helmoth. I will now confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me, particularly the people who are remote. But I'll start with members. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. This will also serve as a sound check for our remote members. Diane Mahan?
Affirmative.
John Hurd?
Yes.
Steve DeCoursey?
Here.
Len Diggins?
You are loud and clear, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Manager Jim Feeney?
Here.
And has Town Council Attorney Mike Cunningham joined us yet? Okay, so he'll join us when he's able. Select Board Administrator Ashley Marr?
Here.
Okay, and I think that's everybody we need to do an AV check for. So as you can see, tonight's meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, signed into law on March 29th, 2023, which further extends certain COVID-19 measures regarding remote participation in public meetings until March 31st, 2025. Before we begin, please note the following. First, this meeting is being conducted in the Select Board chambers and over Zoom. It is being recorded and simultaneously broadcasted on ACMI. Second, people wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. If you're participating by Zoom, you may be visible to others. If you wish to participate, we ask you to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Same thing goes for people here in the room. Third, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not asked to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials found on the town's website, specifically the Select Board Agendas and Minutes page. And finally, because one or more Select Board members are participating remotely, and tonight that is two members, each vote tonight will be taken by rule call in accordance with statute. So let's see how much of the town's business we can get done tonight. Couple of notes for public comment and also a note on the hybrid nature of the meeting. As always, if we have problems with remote members or remote participants experiencing a disconnection, we will first attempt and allow some time to reconnect and hope that that happens. If after a sufficient number of attempts we can't do that, provided that we still have a quorum of the Select Board, which is the three members, we'll proceed with business as usual. Regarding public comment this evening, because we are entering into our season of warrant article hearings, it's a longstanding tradition and practice of the Board, and I think a wise one, that we reserve public comment for the warrant article hearings and any other legally mandated hearings, but we typically omit the open forum portion of the meetings during this season, and that's simply so that we can give the other public hearings, particularly the warrant articles, the attention that they deserve. If we have items where there will be public comment, I will announce those before the agenda or before when we get to that agenda item. And if you are on Zoom and you wish to comment at that time, I'll ask you to raise your hand in Zoom. If you're in the room, obviously you raise your hand here. If you do not know how to raise your hand in Zoom, now would be an excellent time to search for how to do that. I'd like to begin this meeting with some very, an observation of some very sad news. A former town clerk, Corinne Rainville, who served Arlington for 16 years, passed away last week. She died tragically in a house fire of her daughter up in Vermont. And I want to, on behalf of the Board and the town, express our deepest condolences to her family. And I would invite Board members to make any comments, after which we'll observe a moment of silence in Ms. Rainville's memory. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for doing that. As you said, we lost her tragically. So many people devastated, Mrs. Rainville, Corinne's passing. A lot of people still in Town Hall had the opportunity to work with her. And she's someone that Arlington-born, started as a principal clerk, worked her way up. She was the assistant town clerk for many years for my husband's aunt, Anne Mahan-Powers. So she had some really great training, and as you mentioned, she served in that for 16 years. And then she came back and filled in as an interim, I think in 2019, for several months during that transition, and again demonstrating her commitment to the town of Arlington, which was her second family. Her first family, of course, were her children, her two daughters, Carrie and Kristen. She talked about them all the time. And Corinne was really a very quiet, unassuming woman. However, when she was in her element and working down at the town clerk's office and conducting the business of Arlington through the town clerk's office, she was top of the mark in terms of not only the knowledge that she has had, but also one of the just as balance of the job of town clerk is dealing with the public department heads, municipal officials, and sometimes state officials. And I know you will not find one person that won't have anything but to say glowing and extremely positive remarks about any interaction with Corinne. So sad to hear of her passing. I know different people have on Facebook pages and others, there's a GoFundMe account for her daughters. I know I will miss her. I still kept in touch with her now and then. She still said to me, "Diane, you're one of the funniest people I know," which I don't know if I was, but she was kind enough to say that. And I'm really, really going to miss her, along with so many other people. And Godspeed, Corinne. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I also want to express my condolences to Corinne's family. And I knew Corinne when I first became a town meeting member. She was a clerk, and got to know her through her years at various meetings and at a town meeting. And I'm very sorry about the loss.
Any of my colleagues over Zoom want to make comments, please just jump in. Thank you both very much. I think, as I said, now I'd like to invite everyone to pause for a moment and observe a moment of silence in gratitude for Corinne's life and to express our thoughts and prayers Thank you very much. This evening, because one of our members is on family vacation out of state, Mr. Hurd, and he, over and above the call of duty, joined the meeting tonight for one specific item that he is involved with. And so I'm going to take that item out of order and do that now, and that is Item 10, Battle Reenactment Plans. This is, invite Deputy Town Manager Christine Bonjourno and our Economic Development Coordinator Katie Lucie to come speak with us. And I'll note that Mr. Hurd then will make some remarks afterwards. He is, of course, the Select Board Chair to the Arlington 250 Committee, and the connection of that will become very clear momentarily. Miss Bonjourno?
Great. Thank you so much for this opportunity. As you mentioned, I'm Christine Bonjourno, the Deputy Town Manager of Operations, and I have here Katie Lucie, our Economic Development Director here in town. As you know, the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution is coming up. It's next year. The Board has established a committee. John Hurd and Angela Elzuski are the two co-chairs. So a significant amount of work has been done to date to plan for next year's events that are happening. Arlington is a member of a four-community process. We're basically joining forces with Lexington, Concord, and Lincoln, and we're partnering to make sure that our events and the different things that are happening that weekend are all coordinated. And so we're using this year, this April, as a dress rehearsal. All four communities are using this year as a dress rehearsal for next year. One of our big areas that we are planning for is a battle reenactment. And so our team, our committee, has been working closely with a group of battle reenactors to make this happen. So the battle reenactment will be taking place on Sunday, April 14th. And we're here tonight to just ask for your conditional approval to move this forward. Our team has been meeting, our emergency planning team, which includes the Fire Police DPW, has been meeting to look at the logistics of the plan that's been proposed, and we're working closely with the battle reenactors to just make sure that we're looking at all of the different safety, you know, safety concerns that we're able to appropriately staff and move people in and out of the community. So I ask for conditional approval to close Mass Ave from Grove Street, Grove Prentice Street, all the way to Medford Street while we work through the logistics with our emergency planning partners. I will just mention that Arlington isn't alone, as I mentioned before. We are working closely with Lexington, Concord, and Lincoln. We do have partners in those communities that are doing the same in looking at making sure we're evaluating all safety concerns and making sure that we're appropriately staffing our communities. I think, you know, at this point, I'd love to hear from John if he has anything else he would like to add.
Yep, absolutely. And let me just, I didn't write down, I'm sorry, the date again?
It's Sunday, April 14th.
Okay.
And the closure will happen. We are looking tentatively, again, this is a conditional approval, based on the need for us to really continue to work through the logistics with our police, fire, and with the battle reenactor group. The closure would happen from 12 noon until 5:00 PM.
Okay. All right, so the request is a conditional approval of a closure of Mass Ave from Grove Prentice to Medford, conditioned upon further work from the town officials, Sunday, April the 14th, and 12:00. Okay, anything else from you before I turn to Mr. Hurd?
I'll just also add, in addition to just our local public safety officials, we've also been working with MIMA and the Boston Athletic Association, as well as FEMA. So there's a lot of different parties that have been working regionally just to make sure that this is really going to be a very safe event, since this will be really one of the first major public events since the pandemic.
Excellent. Thanks very much. Mr. Hurd?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Christine and Katie for all the work they've been doing on this. It's really been a long process to get us to this point, and town staff has really gone above and beyond the call of duty to really put this together. It's an event like we haven't experienced in Arlington before, and I think it will be a really great event for our residents and tourists. I'd like to move approval. And again, we're just asking for the outside parameters of what the event could be, and we're going to work with town officials and public safety officials to make sure that this event is safe and within the bonds of what works for the town. So I would like to move approval, and again, thank everyone for all their work on this event.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurd. I will now turn to my colleagues for any second and potentially any discussion. Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'll second Mr. Hurd's motion. I just want to clarify, I heard you say approval, Mr. Hurd, and Miss Bonjourno had asked for a conditional approval. I know this thing's to be worked out just for purposes of the vote. Is that what your intention was? I just want to make sure I'm seconding the right motion.
Yes, so a conditional approval of, like you said, the outside parameters, but I think the Board really needs to approve is the shutdown of the street from Grove Street to Medford Street, subject to the approval of working with town officials to make sure that the event is safe and within the bonds of what is approved by the town staff.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, happy to support it, and thank you all for the work that you've been doing on this in advance of April 14th.
Excellent. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to all the hard work that's gone into this. And there's still a lot more that I know, many, many hours to coordinate something like this, even though it is sort of a prep for next year, it still is a big, major event. And I just want to make sure I'm correct in my understanding. We're not talking about the parade. We're talking about a battle reenactment.
Correct.
And I understand Lexington, Concord, and I don't know if another community is doing it, but when they have the reenactors, is it going to be a spot in each community? Or is it going to start in one community and go down, go down past Foot of the Rocks? And then the other thing I would ask, just to put in, if it can't be done, that's fine. It may already be being discussed. If Lanson Way was somehow incorporated into that, because I think that was something that I really didn't know a lot about until the town organizers and Angela Elzuski may also have been involved in that. So if you could just maybe just clarify a little bit, it's not a parade, it's a reenactment. Is it continuous, something like that?
I'm happy to respond. Yeah, and thank you for bringing up the Lanson Way. I think that's a really big part of our history that needs to be addressed as well, so thank you. So Lexington, Concord, and Lincoln, we have decided to break down the weekend, and each community will have its own day. So Arlington's Day is Sunday. We're doing many events that weekend. The battle reenactment just happens to fall on that Sunday, and that's the day that Arlington will run. So each day, there will be a battle reenactment in each community.
Yes, Lexington and Concord have their reenactments on Saturday. Those are happening in the morning separately. There will be no movement between those. And then their parades are both happening much later in the day, in the afternoon. So they're really separating out their events. And Arlington is going to have our reenactment on Sunday, and then Lincoln traditionally has their festivities on that Monday.
Okay, and then just from my days gone by with organizing parades and reenactments, only because I know what I went through with growing pains, just about everybody in Arlington expects that around the Jason Russell House, there'll be musket firings and things like that. And I understand from going through the packet that you provided us all, just the initial plans, that the three communities are still discussing about whether there can be, you know, cannons for event purposes obtained, and they may go off at certain points if it's feasible. And just to pass along, which you may already be doing anyways, one of the things when I was first doing parades and reenactments, that I learned my lesson on is people pointed out to me that a lot of people are very sensitive. They expect it down by Jason Russell House, that musket firings and the noise, but if there is a dedicated cannon spot, whether it's David Lanson Way or somewhere else, maybe a look. I used to always just put a sandwich board out so that people would know, just because it's very, and it's not just children, you know, there's other people PTSD. I'm not being melodramatic.
No, no, this is, I don't think you're being melodramatic at all. These are things that we're actively discussing. First off, there will, we've already, Captain Flynn already worked out that there will be no cannon.
Okay.
And yes, and then Christine and I are working with the reenactors to see if there are different areas along the reenactment where we can not have gunfire or any kind of alarming noises. So all these details are part of the conditional approval that needs to be worked out for public safety.
And thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I mean, the work I see that you've done is impressive, very impressive. Regarding Mass Ave, the shutdown of Mass Ave, especially across Route 60, I'm not recalling that anytime recently, so I don't have a problem with it. I mean, I'm just, I'm sure you're going to do this, but just notify people like well in advance of that closure, especially on the, you know, Route 2 and, and I guess the, I don't know how far in the other direction you want to go, but I would imagine people would appreciate knowing far in advance that Mass Ave is going to be shut down that day for five hours. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Any further comments, Mr. Hurd?
Yeah, again, we're closing that down in, it's subject to discussions with the reenactors and with town staff. So in the event that that happens, it will be, there'll be a lot of lead time, and the town staff will make sure that we do it safely.
Okay. Very good. Any further discussion from the Board? Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Hurd and a second by Mr. DeCoursey, and I've asked Ms. Marr to call the roll this evening.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
That's a 5-0 vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks to all. And I'll note that we have been joined by Attorney Mike Cunningham. Welcome, sir. And then we'll go back to the top of the agenda and move to Item 2, the approval of the sale of $200,000 in a sewer bond dated March the 4th, 2024, to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority for the inflow, and we'll walk real slow, Mr. McGee, this will take a while. For the inflow and infiltration of, no, come on up, for the inflow and infiltration of local financial assistance program and approval of the sale dated March 11th, 2024, of $2,600,000 in water bonds to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority for the local water system assistance program. And we are delighted to have our other Deputy Town Manager, Alex McGee, who is also the Finance Director for the town. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're here to seek approval for the sale of some bonds that have been authorized at a couple of previous town meetings. As the Chair noted, we're looking for $200,000 for sewer work and $2.6 million for water work. The water project is to replace the water main along Pleasant Street, and this is all MWRA subsidized loans, so they come with a 0% interest, so it's very advantageous to borrow money this way.
Thank you, sir. I will now turn to the Board for motions, questions. Mrs. Mahan?
I'd like to move approval, the sale of the $200,000 sewer bond and the $2.6 million water bond.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Replacing 100-year-old pipe at 0% sounds like a good thing to me.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Okay, I think we're ready to vote then on a motion by Mrs. Mahan and seconded by Mr. DeCoursey. Ms. Marr?
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
And Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
That's a 5-4-0 vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. So Item 3, it's my pleasure to welcome Cecily Miller from the Arlington Commission for the Arts and Culture to talk to us about a request for approval of Arlington Stories banners.
Hi.
Hi, and I give us just a moment to get the slides up on the screen and into the Zoom.
It's not a very fancy presentation this time.
Always good to see you.
See you too. Let me know when you want me to start.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. Well, the Arts Commission has supported a banner project in Arlington Center for about five years, I think, at this point. And traditionally, our youth, they're done, designed by youth. It's been called the Youth Banner Project. This year, the public school system decided they wanted to kind of take a year off and think about how they wanted to manifest public art and whether this was the way that they wanted to do it. So we came up with a different proposal this year, which involves inviting three artists to share kind of people of Arlington, people they know, people they think represent sort of interesting identities and character in the town. And it's something that could recur year to year with different people. In a way, it's returned to a project, the first project that I did in Arlington, which was called Storefront Stories, if any of you remember that, and that was portraits of the local business owners in East Arlington. This document just shows you three representative pieces of artwork by the three artists who've been invited. These are not the work that is going to be on the banners, but each artist will be working in their own style, and you can see that they do work in very different styles, which I think is kind of an interesting aspect to the project. But there will be identity branding on each banner to make it clear this is one uniform And I'm working actually with Katie to see if we can find a storefront location in Arlington Center to do a complimentary display of the banner artwork on paper and short 300-word written portraits of the people, why the artist shows these people, and QR code to Arts Arlington, and a little bit about the artist, so sort of a whole display that kind of explains the banner presentation. So altogether, there will be nine banners, three by each of the three artists. Originally, I was hoping to bring in a youth component to continue that aspect of the project, but in the end, what the Arlington High School Art Department decided to do is an internal banner project. So they'll be putting banners up on school property in front of the high school around the same time. So the projects will be somewhat complimentary. So that's the basic outline.
Great.
And the area, actually, if you want to flip up, although I made an error, it's, there are 11 to the map, there are 11, yeah, to the map. There are actually 11 banners, but that might hold banner stations, but it actually does extend up to here. There are three on this part of Mass Ave and the on this.
Gotcha.
I have a corrected map, if you would like one for your records.
Yeah, that'd be good to supply to the Select Board Office after the meeting. Yeah, thank you. Great, thank you very much. So I'll now turn to the Board for questions, comments, and motions. Mrs. Mahan?
I'd like to move approval for the celebrating Arlington Stories banners series, April 1st, 2024, to May 31st, 2024. And it's my understanding that sometime in March, we'll see, the Board will see what the banners that are going to go up will be?
Yeah, we, sometime in March, exactly. Yep, mid-March.
And I do want to say, I do appreciate, this is really the first time, I think, I've seen this particular document. It looks very simple, but I think it's good that we have a banner schedule that already has the Chamber of Commerce listed in there, and then the Commission for Arts and Culture, and then as we move forward with any other banner requests, if we could continue to receive this, so that, one of the questions we always ask, because we used to find out after the fact that we had overlapping conflicting times, so thank you to whoever did that, and look forward to also seeing that in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and I should note that my understanding is that banners celebrating the high school graduation go up in June. So, you know, DPW will take ours down when those go up, you know, like ours might be up for a little bit in June if they're not ready, or if they're ready, it'll be right at that timeframe, but I'm pretty sure they use all of those light poles.
Okay, great. Mr. DeCoursey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll second Mrs. Mahan's motion, and then thank you for the presentation tonight.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Hold on a second. Any, Mr. Diggins?
Yes, I mean, so I'm going to be happy.
No, hold on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Len, if we could just take down the screen, Chair, so we can see all of Mr. Diggins.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, now we have all of you, sir.
Okay, cool. You know, so I'm very happy to, I'll be very happy to vote for this. I like the representative paintings and also our drawings, you know, and I am happy that you mentioned that the high school is still having their banner display. You and I were fortunate enough to be asked to be judged again this year, and I got to tell you, you know, there's some really impressive artwork coming out, so if you can get yourself around the high school when they have their banners up, I think you'll be happy to see them. And Ms. Miller, I'm going to put you on the spot and ask you, where is that utility box?
It's near the fire station, near Helena's.
All right. I'll have to keep an eye out for it. I've walked past her a lot. I haven't seen her, but I really like that one. I really like it, so thank you.
Oh, no, no, wait, I think that's wrong. I think it's on Broadway Plaza, actually. It's somewhere right in the center, and I'm forgetting now.
Well, I guess, I'm putting you on the spot, but it's harmlessly so, so, but also I want to talk to you about some other things, so I'll get in touch. So thank you very much for all the work you do.
And you know, it's, that design style is based on these trucks that are painted by their owners in Pakistan. It's a Pakistani folk art form.
And, and you know, it's, that design style is based on these trucks that are painted by their owners in Pakistan. It's a Pakistani folk art form, that the trucks that do these long-distance deliveries are beautifully, colorfully painted.
Yeah, it's spectacular, me and, and I just learned something else, so thank you once again.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. So we have a motion by Mrs. Mahan and seconded by Mr. De Corsi. Ms. Mar.
Mr. Dickens.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Helmath.
Yes.
That's a four zero vote.
Thank you very much. Now it takes us to the consent agenda, items four, five, and six. Item four is the 2024 Farmer's Market. Item five is acceptance of funds from various entities from the Health and Human Services Department. Item six is a request for a special one-day beer and wine license, March 9th, 2024, at the Robbins Library Reading Room for a private event by Lizzie Wyatt. Turn to the board for motions or discussion. Mr. De Corsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move approval.
Ms. Mahan.
Second with one question. I'm going to assume, unless Town Council tells me differently, that we do not need a separate vote for the acceptance of funds agenda, item five, that it can be done on the consent agenda.
Attorney Cunningham, is that correct?
Mrs. Mar is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for checking. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, on a motion for approval of the consent agenda by Mr. De Corsi and seconded by Ms. Mahan, Ms. Mar.
Mr. Dickens.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Helmath.
Yes.
Four zero vote.
Thank you very much. This moves us on to our appointments. We have, we'll start with item seven, appointment to the Historic District Commission. This is the Jason and Gray Historic District, Kenneth Lubar. Is Mr. Lubar in the room or on Zoom tonight? If you are in the Zoom, we'll bring you in. Raise your hand if that's, I don't see. Okay. We do, do we have materials for Mr. Lubar's? Let me switch over to my thing here. So, you know, I'll leave this to my colleagues' discretion. Sometimes, sometimes we do approve appointments if we have sufficient materials, but that is really at the board's discretion.
I'd like to move approval. We do have the attachment materials. And I'm not sure if he's taking Mr. Warden's previous spot, but I know with many of our commissions and committees needing to have a full membership with it, publicly notice committees needs to move forward. But that, we certainly would ask that he come either in person or hybrid remotely at a future meeting. So I would move approval.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that is, that is, I neglected to say that is a common practice as well, and I think a wise one. So do we have a second or other discussion? Mr. De Corsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll second that and with that condition. And thank you for adding that, Mrs. Mahan.
All right.
I'll save my comment for when he comes. It's a very positive comment, but I'll save it for then.
Okay. All right. So we have a, a motion to approve with a condition on a request to, to appear before the board at a future date by Mrs. Mahan and seconded by Mr. De Corsi. Ms. Mar, Ms. Mar.
Mr. Dickens.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Helmath.
Yes.
Four zero vote.
Okay. So we have two appointments to the Tree Committee. Attorney Cunningham, can you remind me if we need to vote these individually or together?
Individually, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, say, say again.
Individually, Mr.
Thank you, sir.
Individually, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
There we go. No, that's right. You know, we are all rolling with the, with the air tubes here. Okay, so let's start with Marina Popova, and I'm probably not saying the name right. Please tell me how to say it correctly. She's in the room tonight. Welcome. Please, thank you for your, for your interest. Please just introduce yourself and just very briefly express your interest in serving on the Tree Committee.
So I'm, I am Marina Popova. I'm very interested in joining the Tree Committee because I'm a huge nature lover. We feed bunnies in our backyard and stuff. And, and the trees, I think, is the most precious thing that we have that helps everyone. And I learned all the great stuff that Tree Committee is doing, like increasing the tree canopy in Arlington. And I really want to help because I think that everyone deserves to reap the benefits of that. And that's why I'm trying to join.
Thank you very, very much. So now I'll turn to the board for motions and questions, comments. Mr. De Corsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Marina, thank you for your willingness to serve. I'll move approval and, and thank you for the letter expressing your interest and, you know, you're helping your friends get rid of invasives. I know a lot of us in our neighborhood could use that help as well. But thanks for your interest and your willingness.
Mrs. Mahan.
I'll also second and, and say welcome. This is a really important committee, as all of our committees are, but especially with climate change issues. Besides the aesthetics and, and other positives around what the Tree Committee does, this is a very active, as you know, committee that really does a lot of thoughtful, has a lot of thoughtful deliberations, discussions at meetings, and has really consistently been putting forward warrant articles and suggestive policies moving forward, which have been beneficial for the town. But the other thing that's really exciting about that, it's been educational, too. I didn't realize how important trees are and canopies and the breadth, width, and other things until we had a formal Tree Committee. So thank you so much for your willingness to do this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion?
Yes, good old DBH, Mrs. Mahan. Anyways, thank you very much, me and you, for, for joining forces with us. And, and I'm sure you'll figure out some way to apply your big data skills. We need to help you out on the Tree Committee, so thank you once again.
Very well. All right. So we have a motion to appoint by Mr. De Corsi and seconded by Mrs. Mahan. Ms. Mar.
Mr. Dickens.
Oops. I muted myself. Sorry about that.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Helmath.
Yes.
Four zero vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your willingness to serve. We look forward to it. And then we have Olivia Aray-Ares. Please correct my pronunciation if I got that wrong.
It was very good. Thank you.
Very good. Welcome, sir. Please, as before, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your service.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I've been living in Arlington for 15 years. I love this town. I also see it's one that is changing very fast. And I think that the preservation of our canopy and our trees should be part of any plans we have to grow the town and beautify it. I'm deeply committed to contributing to our fight against climate change. I think trees have a role to play. I think trees have an economic value for the town, for homes. And having been part of the Tree Committee for a couple of sessions, I think it's the right place to apply my commitment, my motivation, whatever skills I have, to help further that mission of protecting, growing our tree canopy in the town. So I welcome the opportunity to be part of this action.
Thank you very much. Now I'll turn to the board. Mrs. Mahan.
I would like to move approval of Olivia Aray-Ares. And with that, my thanks. My, my previous remarks, but I'm also very excited to see all your different affiliations with Trustees of Reservation, the Mass Audubon Society, the Appalachian Mountain Club. I know quite a few Arlington residents are also involved, as you are, with those. So it's sort of like Old Home Week for Arlingtonians with, but to me, that's sort of, each member brings a certain kind of expertise or something that really is going to add to the committee that we have. So I'm really excited to see that because I know you'll be able to, it's going to sound like a pun, help grow this committee in a way that perhaps someone like myself had not thought about. So as I said before, and I mean this, it's an extremely important committee. It's done a lot of good things in the past, and I know it will in the future. Thank you for your willingness to do this because we couldn't afford to pay you, but I appreciate it.
Oh, really? Well, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. De Corsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll second Mrs. Mahan's motion and thank you, Aray-Ares, for your interest. And I also noted your experience as a volunteer and all the work you've done with the Trustees of Reservations and, and that, that experience. I know a number of people in town, I'm a member of that as well, and appreciate your willingness to step up and serve on the Tree Committee.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Further discussion? Mr. Dickens.
Yes, and thank you once again, you know, as my colleagues have done, you know, and as my colleague, Mr. Corsi, mentioned, you know, various other activities. And your pro bono work is also very impressive, me, quite, you know, quite the diversity of, of, of interests, me. And so I think we'll benefit from that in lots of ways, Pete, so thank you once again.
Okay. So I think we're ready to vote on a motion to appoint by Mrs. Mahan and seconded by Mr. De Corsi. Ms. Mar.
Mr. Dickens.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Helmath.
Yes.
Four zero vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Look forward to your service. And, you know, I often say, after appointments, sometimes during them, it's, it's always a reminder to talk with these folks and, and read their resumes. And we all do read the letters and resumes, and just how fortunate we are that, that we have so many highly qualified, highly committed volunteers. That's part of what makes Arlington such a well-run town, and we are very, very grateful. Let's move on to item nine, under licenses and permits, for approval, a common vitular license for Keylo's Taqueria on 162 Mass Ave. We have Jamie Herrera. Please, come on up.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for choosing Arlington for your business. If you would just introduce yourselves, and we have your materials in front of us, but just for the public's benefit, talk us, tell us a little bit about the plans for your business.
Thank you. My name is David. I'm co-owner with my uncle over the place.
Good evening, everyone. Jamie Herrera, nephew. We, first of all, want to say that we are very sorry for your loss. I know how hard it can be. I, not too long ago, we lost our fathers, so.
Oh, sorry.
So we are very sorry for that. Very excited to be here tonight and for the opportunity and, and so grateful for the opportunity to just be part of Arlington, the town of Arlington, and this way, serve the community when it comes food, food industry. We're very excited. Thank you for the opportunity.
Well, as you know, I'm happy to be here. Thank you very much for the, the city doing great with us, all the paperwork, the process. I appreciate that a lot. We're excited. I'm excited. As you know, we're, the reason why we're here, right? I can't wait to be part of this town, be part of the community and serve and do what I love, which is feed people, you know.
Serve food.
Bring food, serve food. So, again, I thank my uncle, too. He's happy to be here. And we want to be part of the community. What else I can say? Very excited.
Thank you so much. So I'll now turn to the board for questions, comments, and motions. Mrs. Mahan.
First, I'll move approval and, and say welcome. I know in the restaurant business how difficult it is. Some of my family members are also involved in that and a lot of things. And I'm so sorry to hear about your dad.
Thank you.
I'm fortunate to have my dad still with me, so, but God bless you and your family for that. And thank you for thinking of Ms. Rainville. But I know how difficult the, the restaurant business is. And a lot of times, I want to say 95%, it's usually a family-run business because you do give your heart and soul, and really, your family is the one that, that will do that for you. And, and I wish you nothing but success. I understand you're already down there making some improvements. People are telling me if I go down and peek in, I can see on the chalkboard some of your offerings that you already submitted to us. I think you're very ambitious, doing breakfast, lunch, and dinner, but.
The reason we're doing that, because personally, I've personally been doing that for like 20 years, you know? So I know what involves. I know it's a lot of responsibility. I've been dealing with inspection for so many years with city. So we know what we're going to, you know, and I like it. I enjoy what I do, you know? So that's the reason I, we're doing this. Otherwise, I wouldn't be doing this because I have experienced with family members before, not direct family, but they get into this with zero experience and I know where they end. So we're doing it for a reason.
No, and I'm really excited for you. And as you move forward, this is not a requirement, but our planning department, Planning Director Claire Ricker and/or the Chamber of Commerce, in terms of community events that happen, especially like in East Arlington, this Feast of the East, usually in June, which is a big community event. I'm not saying you have to do either one, but if you make sure you communicate with either or both of those entities, they'll keep you in the loop for everything that's going on.
I have dealt with stuff like that before, which is great, you know? And one thing I want to mention, we have special discount for, for responders. And I would love the city to come with us and I'll give you discount too, special discount. Be part of us. We want to, we want to work with the city, the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. De Corsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, second Mrs. Mahan's motion and, and I'm sorry for your loss. I thought you'd be proud of her. And thank you for providing all the information on your application. It looks like a great menu and, and it's a long day, 6:00 AM to 11:00, so taste yourself. But best of luck.
We got people that are willing to work, so yeah, yeah. And again, thank you, I mean, the people around the community, they've been amazing. Here on the, on the town hall, they've been amazing since first day, you know? Everybody stops telling us, you know, where to go, what to do. And it's, it's been, it's been a great experience. Thank you so much.
Mr. Dickens on Zoom.
Yes, I mean, Suzo's hardly been gone, and now the space is filled up. That's great. No empty storefront there. And, and, and as Mrs. Mahan pointed out, you know, you're, you're doing breakfast, too. So you're going to give Arlington Town Diner a run for their money. And I see that you have seven smoothies. I love smoothies. Me, so that's going to be one.
That's good.
One each day of the week, me, and, and you know what, me, I'm just going to make this as a minor suggestion, protein powder in a smoothie, you know, nice margins on those, nice margins. So that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take your recommendation, though. I know you're a gym guy. I can tell, baby.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Thank you again for choosing Arlington. I wish you the best of luck in your business.
Thank you.
So we're ready for a vote now on a motion to approve by Mrs. Mahan and seconded by Mr. De Corsi. Ms. Mar.
Mr. Dickens.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Helmath.
Yes.
Four zero vote.
Thank you very much. Great.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Don't forget, you're all going to have a discount.
No, make us pay full price or more.
Full price to support you, yes.
Charge extra.
Bye, guys.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item 11, the vote of a placement of historic marker. And I believe we're welcoming back Ms. Luzai, Luzai, our Economic Development Coordinator. And we have some display here. And, and, and Ms. Mar, now you're juggling a lot of things, maybe for the lower screen, if it's possible to, yeah, exactly, just make our remote member bigger. Perfect.
Hi, everyone again. My name is Katie Luzai, Economic Development Coordinator. I'll try to make this brief since I know you still have quite a few items on the agenda. So I'm before the board to get, again, conditional approval based on a final location for the placement of a marker indicating General Lafayette's visit to Arlington, which was at the time, West Cambridge. So this is a larger organization who is responsible for creating these markers and getting them in different spots along the Lafayette Trail. They're called the Lafayette Trail Organization. They fully fund the creation of these markers, so these markers are fully paid for, which is always a great place to start. And from the town's responsibilities, it would be our commitment to install these and just make sure that we have the approval for whatever that location is. So just to give you a little bit of backstory about General Lafayette's visit, he came through West Cambridge on September 2nd, 1824. This year is 2024, which marks the 200th commemoration of this visit. General Lafayette had a big impact in formulating the American democracy. And so he had a very big celebratory final tour in 1824 and 1825. Currently, we do have enough evidence through secondary sources to justify putting a marker in our community. I've provided a few here. We don't have any primary sources, which means that our marker has to be a little, a little vague, a little general in the language. Also, given our name changes, it has to be a pretty simplified marker language, which I've provided on the next slide. So our marker would say Lafayette's tour on September 2nd, 1824. General Lafayette was welcomed in this town. I did, I did make the conversation and argument to say, West Cambridge in parentheses, Arlington. They thought it was a little too wordy, and this is where we landed. Local citizens greeted him in front of the Meeting House, which is the present-day Universal Unitarian Church. And below is there the, the foundation that pays for these markers. Just to give you some context on the next slide. Just to give you some context on the next slide, I've provided, and it's a little difficult to see, so I apologize for that, it's, this is just one piece of a very large map, but on this marker map, we have, in purple, the purple square is where the Arlington mark would be, and the blue dots are where other current markers are. So it is a very massive network. Nearby markers include Lexington and Medford, so placing a marker here would really add continuity on that trail, especially from Lexington through Medford, because that was the, the route that he took. I've thrown out a couple of proposed locations. Again, I'm finally, I'm working on a finalized location, because ideally, it would be in front of the first parish, but of course, that's completely up to them, well, ideally, it's completely up to them, whether or not they want to have a marker there. What the foundation has asked for is that it would be placed somewhere along Mass Ave. If you don't mind, we'll move to the next slide, Jim. We could place it in Whitemore Park, those are just a couple of, of ideas. I'm very cognizant of not overcrowding any particular area in Arlington Center with too many markers, because there's a lot of history and a lot happened, and we love to have markers, but I don't want anything to be too distracting. Yes, so what I'm really asking for is conditional approval to make sure that this marker would be approved by the select board, that you were in support of it. If you have any feedback or suggestions, or any strong opinions about where you would like this placed, I am all ears.
Okay. And so, we can do conditional approval tonight, would, would you need to come back to the board for final approval of the, of the location, or are you asking for us for that conditional approval to give discretion to the town manager?
Yes, yes, the latter.
That one?
Yes.
So I'll now turn to my colleagues for discussion. Mrs. Mahan?
I'd like to move approval of the placement, future placement of the historical marker, and in terms of, I would be interested what the Historic Society and others have to say, which I know you've been working with them and will continue to work with them. If you're asking my opinion of where it would be, since, I think you said it was the current UU Unitarian Universalist Church was quote-unquote "the Meeting House," my suggestion would be somewhere where if you're standing near in front of, beside the marker, you somehow can see that. I'm not saying it has to necessarily be in front of that, but that's just my only suggestion, but it should not be me who decides, it should be you.
I very much welcome your suggestion, and I will note, and I should have, I should have said, I was at the Historical Society meeting last night to present this, and got, and got their feedback and opinions and, and blessing.
Great, thank you.
That's a conditional approval with authorizing the town manager to make the final call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
And ultimately, I'll also note, since this is the 200th anniversary, our goal is to have this in place by September, which is why I'm bringing it before the board now, so that it can be ordered, and hopefully, and get here in time for a wonderful celebration.
Got it. Mr. De Corsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll second Mrs. Mahan's motion. I'm glad to hear about the Historical Society, because I had the same question.
Absolutely.
And I will note, September 2nd is a special day, I saw the draft, the slide four, the draft marker that General Lafayette was welcomed on September 2nd, 1824. 140 years later, I was welcomed to Arlington when I was born at Sims Hospital, so.
Maybe we'll squeeze you in on that.
Not as much fanfare of that one, Mr. Chairman, but.
Did you come in on a horse?
No, 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 no. But, but thank you for providing the additional information on other communities as well, because I was aware that there was one in Reading, I think there's some in other parts of the state, and that's helpful.
Yes, you're, you're, I definitely suggest checking out the website, because it's, it's quite an impressive, it's quite an impressive markers, all over, all over the country, really.
Right, thank you. Mr. Diggins, is it hand raised?
Yep, thank you. So I take it this will be permanent?
Say again, sir?
I'm sorry, this will be a permanent marker?
The question is, is this like permanent?
It is, it is a permanent marker. I mean, it, it could be taken out.
Yeah, no, that's fine, go ahead, Mr. Diggins.
No, no, okay, so, see, I mean, often what, I tell people when they like want something permanent, it's like, well, you know, when, when it's permanent, I mean, it doesn't allow, I mean, a space to be used for anything else, you know, and when something's there all the time, I mean, people just kind of stop paying attention to it, I mean, so, so, I find generally, I mean, if you take something down and put it back up, you can often have like a little ceremony about, you know, bringing it back. I just put that out there, I mean, I'm going to agree with this, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying, from discussions I've had with other people about wanting to commemorate other things on a permanent basis, and how we often say, can we not do permanents? You know, but that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, Mr. Mahan?
That made me think of something in terms of whether it's permanent or not. One of the things I used to always ask Lexington, when I first came on the scene, is, you know, how, how was your tourism so vibrant? You know, what is it Lexington's doing that Arlington isn't? And at the same time, at that same meeting, 15, 18 years ago, they said, how the heck do you have all those restaurants in Arlington, why is it so vibrant, what isn't Lexington doing? But one of the things, there were two things they told me for tourism, which I know is a slice of the pie of your job, as well as the other committees, your interfaces, they said, you know, two big things, Lexington Tourism has made us so successful, I thought they were going to say hotels, but it was bus, getting the bus companies a place to turn in and be able to be on the route, and right now, I think the Schwamm Mill is the only one that has that, and that's a last-minute thing they throw in. But the other thing that they said was historical markers, statues, et cetera. So I'd be for something permanent, if possible, because it's a historical marker, but the other thing is, if you could maybe just keep in mind with safety, regulations, boundaries, but if it's something that, I mean, if it's way, way, way too high, you really can't, it literally is people coming, taking a picture in front of it.
Absolutely.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion as described by Mrs. Mahan, and seconded by Mr. De Corsi. Ms. Maher.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
That's a four zero vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It just brings us to items 12 and 13, and these were items that we, that the town manager suggested we place in case we needed them, a vote for a special town meeting for a date to be determined, and, and then, if we were to do that, we would then need the next item, which would be the opening of that warrant. At this time, I'll turn to the town manager for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you alluded to, it is customary to have, oftentimes, we will need a special town meeting within our annual town meeting, and I appreciate the opportunity to have had this item held on the agenda for this evening, but frankly, as I sit here today, I, I don't think that we have any business that was not addressed within the annual town meeting warrant, and I don't see there being a need to call a special within this year's annual town meeting at this time.
Thank you, and I'll add too, that I did, I triple-checked, consulted with the Chair of the Finance Committee and the Chair of the Redevelopment Board, and they also saw, saw, no, I need from therein for, for items for an embedded special. So at this point, I don't think we actually need to do anything other than just take no action, which doesn't require a vote, but I will certainly welcome any comments or questions from my colleagues. Mrs. Mahan?
I just want to say, one of the other reasons we were perhaps pondering a special, which I'll talk about a little bit more on the new business regarding the MBTA assessments, but as we all know.
Okay.
We don't need a special, we can't utilize a special for that, thank you.
All right. Okay, so seeing, seeing no other discussion, we will move past those items and go on to warrant article hearings. So that's item 14, so we have four articles for review for the, for those members of the public who are new to this process, with articles on the warrant, which is an agenda for town meeting, which will start up in late April. This is the annual town meeting. Articles that are not zoning-related and are not money and finance-related are heard by the select board, the select board's responsibility is to have a public hearing, so there'll be a public comment at the end of each presentation. The board will, has a duty to make a recommendation to town meeting about whether we support the proposal or not, and with any details. Typically, what we'll do on the night of the hearing is that we'll just, usually just indicate a positive action or no action, with some instructions to the town council and other staff to help flush out the vote. Those come back to us at a later date when we do final votes and comments. So the, the purpose of tonight is to hear about the warrant articles, to explain them, to provide an opportunity for public comment, and then for a recommended vote, initial vote by the board. So let's move to Article 23, we have endorsement of the CDBG application, deja vu in a good way. Could you, you're going to just introduce yourself and present the article?
Oh, good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm Mary Muzinski, the Community Development Block Grant Administrator for Arlington, and I'll be presenting the CDBG Subcommittee's recommendation for Program Year 50 fiscal year 2025. So this year, we received 18 applications from 15 organizations and town departments. The applications fall into the following categories: affordable housing, public services, public facilities improvements, and planning and administration. The requests totaled over $1,646,000, which is roughly $645,000 more than our expected Program Year 50 allocation. The applications were reviewed by the CDBG Subcommittee members individually, using a rubric for evaluating projects, and then reviewed collectively during two Subcommittee meetings. The Subcommittee established a budget totaling $1,100,000, which is our anticipated allocation from HUD for Program Year 50. Once HUD announces Arlington's grant award for Program Year 50, the Subcommittee may reconvene to adjust the budget as necessary. Any updates will then be presented to the select board. I'd like to thank the organizations that applied for CDBG funding. Organizations that do not receive funding for Program Year 50 are invited to apply again next year. I'd like to thank all the CDBG Subcommittee members, including Mrs. Mahan, Mr. Hurd, and Mr. Feeny, who made the difficult budget, budgeting decisions with Arlington's limited CDBG grant funds. At this time, I'd like to request the select board and town manager approve the preliminary CDBG budget for Program Year 50, and move the CDBG report to town meeting for endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and as was just noted, this is a vote that the town manager participates in as well. And I'll turn to my colleagues for discussion and motions. Mrs. Mahan?
First, I'd like to move approval of the endorsement of the CDBG application. I want to thank Ms. Muzinski for overseeing this process. I've been on the committee twice now, there was a little break in between, and my second stint certainly is very different than the first, and first, it's very appreciated by myself and the fellow Subcommittee members, getting weeks in advance, you know, the notification of the process coming up, the grading matrix rubic, rubic that we use as a guide and fill out, and I think we may have to fill it out because of HUD requirements, but it's certainly evolved along the way, and it's, it's really gotten to a great working document, and as Ms. Muzinski pointed out, 1.6-plus request, 1,600,000-plus request, and only $1 million to do that, and through the Subcommittee meetings, having to flip through various members, especially your two representatives from the select board, what did we do last year, what did we do two years ago, can you go in and level fund everything, can you try it at 2%? And it just eased right through, and, and that's a great testament for you being able to really wear all the hats you need to at that meeting, and I anticipate two to three hours each meeting, and we pretty much can get it done in an hour each time, which is really amazing. And I also want to thank Ms. Muzinski and the, and the town manager, and Mr. Feeny and Claire Ricker, our planning director, because it was, along with the cuts that we needed to make, we also added more work to our department heads and town manager in terms of going back with that $600,000 cut, and really reevaluating and retooling, but still being able to provide the services that I know the residents and the businesses of the town have come to expect, so it looks like, you know, and there were some really difficult decisions. Arlington Eats, Eats presented a great program, which we would love to fund, but as Andy Doane noted, when she was in here, I think at our last meeting, from Arlington Eats, a lot of the, close to all of the applicants and people who are getting money from CDBG under Public Services, Arlington Eats works with, and is very familiar with those programs, so. Very difficult decision, but there was a lot of thought, blood, sweat, and tears put into this, and I really, I know I'm probably going on too long, but it's a great process, and I appreciate you sort of heralding us through that, so that we're productive, make the difficult decisions, but definitely have all the information and the conversation we need to have to get to as best a decision as we can. And Mr. Hurd honestly is invaluable. The first meeting, I couldn't even really call in, my speakers on my laptop were a little lousy, but, you know, he just took a hold of that and ran with it also, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. De Corsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll second Mrs. Mahan's motion, I want to thank everybody on the Subcommittee, and as I look at the schedule this year, I can imagine what you went through, because I, I saw the amounts of the requests, and we ended up in, you have that 15% limitation on public service, and it must have been very, very difficult, and probably more challenging than any, any year, certainly from what I've received, and, and I know you also looked at other opportunities, maybe for some of these applicants, whether it's CPA or elsewhere, so it's, it's tough to, not being able to fund everything, and, and I know there's, there's probably some people who wish they, their organizations, they wish they got a little bit more, but it's just, it's just not available, so thank you for all the work and for the difficult decisions that you had to make.
Yes, yeah, I agree, I mean, I'll, thanks, it was hard, because, because as they came in, I actually wanted to give them more than they were asking for, because they made such a good case for, for their causes, I mean, so I, I definitely, it was hard, and I appreciate what you've done, and I'm sure everyone's going to be appreciative, I mean, for what they get, and hopefully, next year, things will be different. Thank you once again.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Any further discussion, any comments from the town manager, who gets a vote on this?
No, I just wanted to also call out Mary's wonderful work on this process, it really was seamless, and she did, obviously, this is one of the first warrant articles we're hearing, and, you know, that obviously put us on a tighter timeframe, but she kept us on track to be prepared with a detailed report this evening, so I just wanted to thank her personally.
Yeah, thank you for that, I, I'm glad that you mentioned that, too, that it was asking a, a much quicker turnaround, we're on, I think, the earliest track ever for having our warrant ready and, and starting our hearings with this, and we appreciate the flexibility and the, and the extra early work on that. So, okay, so remembering to include the town manager, I will note, the motion by, to approve it by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. De Corsi, Ms. Maher.
Mr. Diggins? Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mr. Feeny?
Yes.
So five zero vote.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
It moves us to Article 24, revolving funds, and I believe we welcome back Mr. McGee, to talk to us about the article. Hello again.
Hello again. So.
Just introduce yourself for the late takers in.
Again, Alex McGee, Deputy Town Manager, Finance Director. We are seeking endorsement for the, our list of revolving funds, which will be presented on a warrant article, number 24, at the annual town meeting. A lot of these are very familiar to this board and to the town meeting members when they ultimately vote on them. There are, we're seeking to establish two new revolving funds this year, a Cutter Gallery rentals with a spending cap not to exceed $15,000, and that'll be rentals to hold small events at the Cutter Gallery, and then a community center rentals fund, we can leverage some of the new facilities at the community center with a spending cap of $50,000. These, all of these revolving funds, the, the whole point of a revolving fund is to have revenues that are associated with the fund that can provide for continuing operations of the, sort of, associated activities of the fund. Another big change that we're looking at in FY '25 is an increase to the Private Ways Repair Fund. This is one that we have run up against our spending cap before, which was previously set at $300,000. We're seeking to increase the cap to $1 million. That doesn't mean that we're going to be ever expending any more money than we normally would in any given fiscal year, but this just sets a new high ceiling that we cannot go above. With the increase in costs associated with horizontal construction, and the increase in requests to do private way repairs, we think that this is a prudent move. We are also seeking a change in how much revenue we collect upfront as part of these projects, with the intent to make this truly a self-sustaining sort of engine for doing those kinds of repairs. Beyond that. Beyond that, all of the revolving funds, spending caps remain the same as they have in the past. There are four revolving funds, which I'll say are sort of on our watch list. They have $0 in anticipated revenues and $0 in anticipated expenses. And if we arrive at this juncture next year without really any other anticipated revenues or expenditures, we may want to look at dissolving those funds as well. So, one other to note, our Conservation Revolving Fund was dissolved at the FY, or at the 2023 Annual Town Meeting, so that does not appear on this list anymore. And the funds from that were transferred, the fund balance, which was not very large, was transferred out of that fund when we dissolved it. Okay, so that is, in a nutshell, what we're looking for.
Thank you very much. And I neglected in the previous item to hold public comment because it's a public hearing. So, I'll ask Mr. Cunningham, after we finish this item, how best to fix that. But for now, let's do, let's do this one right. So, I'll now turn to the public and ask, because this is a public hearing, if there is public comment on this, the Article 24 Revolving Funds. If you wish to comment, please raise your hand in Zoom or in the room physically. Okay, and I'll turn to members of the Board for comments and motions. Mr. Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move to reauthorize the revolving funds listed here. And then, thank you, Mr. McGee, for the presentation. And you mentioned some of the inactive ones, and I don't know if the Gibbs School, there's a balance in it, the energy fund, where that's back as a sixth grade for the past few years. I think the intent on that was when we, there was more rental activity. I don't know if that's one to be, to be looked at over the next few years as well. There might still be some minimal rental activity, but it doesn't look like there's much activity. So, thank you for the presentation.
Okay, do I have a second from the room or in Zoom?
Second?
All right. Second by Mrs. Mahan. Any discussion? Oh, Attorney Cunningham?
Mr. Chace, I want to mention, it's not in the memo that I prepared for the Board, but the Enabling Statute for these revolving funds is Chapter 44, Section 53 and 1/2. And the two new requested revolving funds set forth by the Town Manager and his staff are also appropriately established if this Board chooses to support this article.
Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Mahan?
I think my brain is playing tricks on me. Was the, any function of the Cemetery Commission, perhaps even the Chapel, was that at one time a revolving fund, and it's not?
It is currently still a revolving fund.
Is it?
It's on our watch list, yeah.
Oh, okay, so it's not on here?
It's, it's on the last page of this. There's three pages worth of funds listed. It's the second to the last. It's...
Oh, okay, now I see it. I'm sorry. No, it, this has gone down like three times, and I didn't have it printed out in paper. So, now I do see that. Okay, and it is, okay, good. I'm saying, I thought I, okay, that's it.
Good memory.
I'm not trying to be like, oh, I remember that. I don't, but anyways, whatever. Melodramatic, sorry. Second, Mr. De Corsi's motion.
Thank you very good. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, so I do think it's good to take the private way fund out, but raise the cap to a million. You mentioned, though, that you're going to try to bring in more money upfront, you know. So, how much more, percentage-wise?
Right, so, so the change, so currently, we request 1/3 of funds be brought upfront, and the request to change to bring 2/3 of the project cost upfront. So, it'll lead to a higher initial cash flow to sort of launch into the project.
Right, right. So, so, so do, what do you imagine would be the impact on the residents who are trying to do a better, because it's kind of doubled upfront, you know?
Right, yeah. Typically, so what we have seen is that somewhere in the 70% to 80% range of projects are paid in full upfront. So, so most of the time, they're paid in full. Most residents elect to do that. And so, we thought that this was a reasonable number to get to that would allow us sort of smoother operations and to bring more projects onboard in any given year.
No, that's, that's a relief to hear, because also, I could imagine that if people were struggling to do it, then it would, you know, provide more incentive for people to not try to do the betterment, you know, or for, for, let me see, you have to have 2/3 of the residents, you know, vote for it, and so that could provide, I mean, less incentive for them to vote for it. So, that's reassuring. So, yeah, and there was again the 1 million. Good, I mean, and, and as you know, the prices have gone up, and they'll probably go up again, and we may have to raise it again. And maybe also be a function, like, we have a lot of projects coming, you know, to, to the foreground now. And maybe, you know, that, you know, we have these, these kind of, you know, like, what do you call it, like pig in the python effect, you know, because like, they come to, they, they, we do them now, and then, then 40 years from now, you know, we have to do all these again. So, so just something to keep in mind. But, yeah, I'll be happy to support this.
And I believe the Town Manager had a further comment.
Yeah, I think I just wanted to add some additional context along the lines of what Mr. Diggins is pointing out, is that the change that Mr. McGee proposed will be discussed in a future warrant article hearing with respect to our betterment or private way bylaw.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I look for, I look for that discussion. I think since it, since the point was raised, if you can confirm my, my understanding of this, is that the, if, in that part of the discussion, this is the 2/3, and that affects the revolving funds, so thus the relevance. But that's 2/3 of the money needs to be raised. It's not, it's not a requirement that each butter contribute 2/3 upfront?
Correct.
Total project.
Total, total project, yeah. So, I mean, given what you said of the 70% to 80% already coming in, you know, fully all the time, and that's the basis of our comfort with that.
Right, and then, and then the balance of that 70% to 80% would elect to pay this betterment as a betterment on their tax bills. So, over, spread over five years, they would pay whatever proportion of the project is theirs.
Got it. Great. Okay, any further discussion? All right, and we did public comment on this. All right, so I think we're ready for our vote. We have a motion for a favorable action by Mr. De Corsi. Yes, yes. Attorney Cunningham?
I did, Mr. Diggins, and thank you. But I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
I think Zoom is failing us at the moment, Attorney Cunningham, and breaking up a little bit.
Mr. Diggins correctly saw me, but if you could, I'll, I'll make a comment afterwards if you proceed with the vote, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry about that.
Okay. All right, so I think we're ready to vote on this. Mrs. Mar?
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
4-0 vote.
Okay, good. And assuming that the Zoom is, is connection is working, Attorney Cunningham, since, since the Chair neglected to have public comment for Article 23, do, should we, obviously invite that now, but should we reopen that hearing and then revote? Or what, what's your suggestion?
My recommendation, Mr. Chair, and first of all, I should remind you, Mr. Chair, that's not the Chair's fault. You've got a lot on your plate. My connection's spotty, and I apologize for that. But I would recommend that the Chair allow for a public comment, if any, at this time. And then, depending on the result of that call, the, there could be a motion from a member to revote.
All right. Yeah, that sounds good to me as well. All right, so, thank you, Attorney Cunningham. And the, so, let's reopen Article 23, the endorsement of the CDBG application. We don't need to redo the presentation, but I will invite public comment on that. So, if you are in Zoom and wish to comment on Article 23, please raise your hand in Zoom at this time. Likewise, if you're in the room, please do the same thing. Okay, Ms. Mar?
Seeing none, thank you.
All right, seeing none. Okay, thank you. So, Attorney Cunningham suggested it might be prudent for a member to suggest a motion for a revote?
Move approval of Article 23?
Second.
Okay, on a motion to approve by Mrs. Mahan and second by Mr. De Corsi, and including the Town Manager in this vote, Ms. Mar?
Mr. Diggins?
Oh, Mr. Diggins, I'm sorry. I missed you there. Didn't see your hand go up in Zoom.
Oh, I think she was just calling the roll.
Oh!
Yeah.
As you were.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mr. Feeny?
Yes.
That's 5-0.
Well done.
Thank you.
It's especially busy with remote members tonight. It is a different experience, I must say. I'm still getting used to that. There we go.
But I'll be back, Mark. So, I'll be back the next meeting, just when you're getting used to it, and I'll be back.
Well, that'll be a pleasure. We miss you. All right, so that takes us to Article 36, Endorsement of the Parking Benefit District Expenditures. Mr. McGee, are you here for that, too?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Article 36, we're seeking endorsement for the Parking Benefit District Expenditures Budget. This is an annual budget that is prepared with the sort of, with a specific focus of the revenues that are generated by the Parking Benefits District, which essentially is, you can think of that as the bounds along Mass Ave that has metered parking. And so, this takes into account all of the revenues that we anticipate collecting in a given year on one side of the ledger, and then on the other side, all of the sort of maintenance operations, and then other expenditures that we anticipate in the given fiscal year. So, in FY24, we're starting the year with a fund balance of $623,000. And this year, we're planning on closing the year with a balanced revenue and expenditure number. Now, whether we come in exactly at that level, we're not entirely sure, but we're, we're tracking pretty, pretty good, a little ahead of schedule with our revenues, and that is even with a couple months of downtime over last summer with our meter operations. So, that's good news there. So, we anticipate the same starting fund balance in FY25, and then making some targeted investments in '25 to the Parking Benefits District. If Mr. Feeny wants to talk about some of those high-level things, I'll turn it over to him.
Sure. So, there were three items within the Parking Benefit District Expenditure Budget that I would highlight for the Board, as they are sort of, you know, what I would call one-time expenditures. The first is for the Russell Common Lot. So, there, we've been, have some design and planning work underway through Public Works and our own Engineering Division to look at rehabbing the islands within the Russell Common Lot, which are frankly, a bit tired, but also a challenge to maintain. So, we're re-envisioning those islands whereby we would remove much of the currently impervious surface, replace it with some measure of pervious surface, but also seek to replace and provide a better environment for the existing trees, which are struggling to thrive and are not providing the canopy that folks would hope for, say, you know, the farmer's market or other events that happen in that lot. So, you know, that's one sort of specialty project that we're looking forward to implementing and really making an improvement within that lot with an eye towards increasing shade and tree canopy. The second would be a line called Electric Upgrades. Last construction season, I headed up an effort to have what we know as GFCIs or receptacles put atop some of the pedestrian-scale lighting poles in Broadway Plaza, so that, like we do in Arlington Heights and in East Arlington, we have a place to plug in string lights that could then be wrapped in a serpentine fashion around the light poles. So, what we hope with that line is to expand that effort and continue to install additional receptacles on the somewhat-dated pedestrian-scale lights in Arlington Center, so we can hopefully over time achieve a uniform aesthetic as you drive through our business districts from sort of front to back or top to bottom, however you want to think about that. And then, a line as well called for the 200th, 250th Decoration. So, again, that would be a one-time effort to increase and generate new banners, provide for additional flags, and a number of other types of decorations and event and activity support for activities surrounding the 250th Celebration. But as Mr. McGee alluded to, you know, some of the other items are sort of year-over-year and more annual operations. I just wanted to flag some of those sort of above-and-beyond efforts that we were looking at, out of, within the Parking Benefit District. And I want to, you know, while I have the opportunity to thank the, you know, we had to call the, a meeting of the Parking Advisory Committee, and they were able to, you know, meet this morning to review this budget, but also, you know, propose some other projects that we would undertake under our streetscape improvement lines. So, we try to get input not only from Committee members, but the Chamber of Commerce, Katie Luzai, our Economic Development Coordinator. So, there was a great effort, and happy to see this before the Board this evening.
Thank you, both of you. And I'll turn to the Board. Mrs. Mahan?
I'd like to move approval of Article 36, and I have one question, that if it's a big, long, detailed answer, then I'll just follow up on tomorrow. But just looking at the figures for the FY24 budget versus actual, and then FY25 budget, especially on single and multi-space meters, is that off? Why is that off so much? Is it because of the meters being down so much? Is it just a crazy estimate? Although, when I look at the FY24 budget and '25, they're close, but that's because the pay-by-phone and that crazy interest comes into play. But I'm just wondering where that is, and, and I guess we're going to adjust for that in the future.
Yeah, I would say you've just hit upon what is the major discrepancy, and that is the manner of accounting. You know, in the proposed FY24 budget, there was NA in pay-by-phone, but obviously, pay-by-phone is becoming an increasingly popular way to make use of our meters. And that is a, you know, it comes in as a separate transaction, so we're going to account for it separately. But there are funds within that line that could apply to both single space and multi-space meters, but for accounting purposes, it will be easier for us to track it as its own source. So, that's what's skewing the actual FY24 numbers lower within the actual collections, and we are modeling our FY25 proposed budget off the FY24 actual, not the FY24 proposed.
So, that's an anomaly. We probably won't see that. We'll see something, but not to that extent.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Feeny, Mr. McGee.
And if I could just allude to the, you know, as Mr. McGee touched upon, you know, believe it or not, this summer, when we were not technically collecting at our meters, there were still a number that were functioning, and we're collecting some revenue. But for the first two months of this fiscal year, we were not collecting the full amount of what we would expect. So, you may notice that, in the big picture, FY25 is a very modest increase over fiscal year '24. And I think we're conservatively looking to fiscal year '25 to be our new benchmark year for what a full year of collections looks like in a post-pandemic world.
Thank you.
Mr. Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll second Mrs. Mahan's motion and a couple of comments and questions. And given the decline in revenue because the meters were down, do you see expenditures being greater than the revenues for fiscal '24 and perhaps having to tap into the fund balance?
What I would say is, you know, based on the revenues for fiscal year '24 to date, we are, you know, hovering at around 75%, yet we still have a significant portion, and it is a busier portion of the fiscal year for parking. So, you know, I'm actually feeling confident that we're likely to hit our revenue figures, given that, you know, the first few months were not full collection months.
And I'll also note that some of our expenditure line in FY24, we're still carrying some money that was encumbered from FY23. So, it never closed to fund the balance. So, that money was tied to a project that was, began in FY23 and is still being expended now. So, I think that we'll be okay on the expenditure side as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. And just, I have to ask this question for Peggy Metropolis. She brings up a lot. On the trash management line, I see there's money that hasn't been expended. I think in talking to Mr. Feeny, there was still a plan to buy some, the Big Belly barrels for the far side of the Broadway Plaza near the fire station. Are those still on back order or in planning?
We did receive yet another batch, and you can start to see them in Arlington Center, but we still... but we still do have a few more forthcoming for some additional locations.
Okay. And just a comment on the pay-by-phone, the app. I mean, it's remarkable how much people are using that. It hasn't been in that long, and you're really going to see that take off, I think, in the future, which is great. Thank you.
And for the discussion, Mr. Dickens.
I'll just say that in melodramatic fashion, Mrs. Mahan asked all my questions, you know, so I'm all set here. And also, I'm happy to see that the seasonal decorations go up by roughly 25K. I mean, I know one entity is going to be happy with that, so thank you.
Okay, let's do the public comment portion of this article. So this being a public hearing for Article 36, we have Mr. Schlickman on Zoom who wishes to comment on Article 36. Bring him in to the panelist momentarily.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board. Just as somebody who lives across the street from Russell Common, I'm encouraged to hear that you're going to look to do something about the medians within those parking lots, because right now, they're looking kind of sad. And any improvement would certainly be merited. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My Zoom is down, so I'll rely on Ms. Mar to tell me if there's any other people for a public comment. Mr. Moore, you can come in? Mr. McGee, we have a member here. Welcome, sir. Just introduce yourself and give your comment.
Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. I don't know if this question is appropriate at this time. It may not be. But my question, when you brought up the meters and the fact you're talking about, you know, pay-by-phone and that sort of thing. I know that we now, I believe, have a full deployment of the new style of meters. And I'm wondering, are they owned by the town or leased?
Sure, we can go there. Mr. McGee?
We own the meters.
Okay, well, that's, my next point was going to be, if we lease the meters, could we please do something about making them more visible in bright sunlight? They are impossible to read. And I don't understand how that missed, when the design was picked, how that was missed. Because I have a very hard time making them out when the sun is full bright. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that comment.
Appreciate the feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any further comment from the public in the room or on Zoom? Ms. Mar?
Seeing no hands raised.
All right. Let's, so we have a motion for positive action by Mrs. Mahan. Second, I'm Mr. DeCoursey. Ms. Mar?
Mr. Dickens?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Four, zero vote.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. And brings us to Article 66, a resolution for MBTA service. We can bring Mr. Schlickman back in, I think, as the proponent for this. Mr. Schlickman and friend.
It's nice to be back.
Please go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. As you are aware, we passed a similar resolution last year. But I think that things have not improved. In fact, things have gotten worse, and I think it's worth voting the resolution again. I certainly would be very happy if it went through on the consent agenda, because I think it's more important that the resolution gets passed and spread to state leadership than to have any kind of an extended debate in town meeting, because I think the residents and taxpayers of the town of Arlington would be grateful to know that Town Meeting is aware of the issues with transit in Arlington and are looking to involve the state in the MBTA in terms of solving the problems. That said, since the resolution last year, a couple of things have changed. So I've refreshed last year's resolution with a couple of additional points. One is that on January 29, the Arlington School Department began running a parallel yellow school bus service in the mornings, because the service for our students going to Addison Middle School became so bad, and we had such a critical issue with tardy students, because the buses weren't coming. And that's just a representation of a further deterioration of the service in town. With the loss of the '79 and the significant reduction in the service of the '77, it's been a real problem for us to get our kids to school on time. Also, last year, on October 25, Town Meeting voted 189 to 35 to approve the transit-oriented housing zoning changes consistent with the MBTA Communities Act. And I think that Arlington has been a leader in this. We pass this by a four-to-one margin. We fully support, as a town, the housing obligations that we have being close to the city and trying to become a transit-friendly, transit-oriented community. But we can't do that without the transit. And thirdly, I think that we have new leadership, both in terms of the Secretary of Transportation and the MBTA General Manager. And I think it behooves us to ask that they come and talk to us. They've been very responsive to other communities. They haven't been here. We haven't asked them to be here. We should ask them to come here and address some of the issues that we're having. So that's the resolution. Hopefully, we'll get a positive vote from the Board of Selectmen recommending the Town Meeting adopts this. We can get it through in the consent agenda, and we can all have apple pie afterwards.
Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Schlickman.
I've been doing this too long. I'm sorry.
Let's turn to the public comment for the hearing for this resolution. So we have Mr. Oster raising, and Ms. Gruber. We could bring them in. Raise your hand in Zoom if you wish to comment on this article. And let's start with Mr. Oster. Good evening. Go ahead, Adam. You can unmute yourself.
Oh, I didn't, I missed some sound when it was switching over. Yeah, so I also think it's important to say this every chance we get. And it feels a little bit like the definition of insanity, because nothing happens, and nothing happens, and nothing happens. But I believe that someday, something happens, and we should be there by doing this kind of stuff when that day comes. I also want to remind the board that the T's new improved bus plan, which is not what we've got yet, but the thing that they're aiming for, will cut Arlington service to the red line by 20% compared to what used to be scheduled. And that it's actually worse than that, because within those cuts is a 60% cut to the ALWIF service. The board may recall that it received a report detailing these cuts a year ago and referred that to the Town Manager. And I just bring that up because it's, we all know we have a crappy service, but we also have the receipts. And it can be useful in whatever conversations we might have in the future. That report, by the way, is in the correspondence received for February 6 of last year, if anyone wants to retrieve it easily. And the only thing I'd say about the resolution, maybe making it a little better, is I think it should, along with calling for all of the, you know, better service down Mass Ave, it should expressly call for improved service to ALWIF. And I hope it all goes the way that Paul says it will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gruber? Good evening.
Yes, thank you for letting me speak. And thank you to Mr. Schlickman for bringing this resolution to Town Meeting. As a member of the MBTA Communities Working Board, but speaking for myself, and not being so audacious has to suggest that the state has any responsibility for quid pro quo. We did put together a plan that was intended to take advantage of new housing in transit-oriented areas of the town. And I certainly hope that the state is planning on providing the necessary public transit that we are counting on housing development being able to take advantage of. So I support this resolution wholeheartedly. And again, I want to thank Mr. Schlickman for bringing it to the Town Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any further comment from the public in Zoom or in the room on Article 66? Ms. Mar?
Seeing no hands raised.
Okay.
And I'll turn to the board, and just with a request for my colleagues, that tonight's vote, so that, particularly with our questions about a quorum in here, I didn't want to recuse myself from this discussion in case that we would, Zoom would fail and we would lack a quorum. So to keep this clean, just for my own potential conflict of interest, if we, I think it's fine if we move favorable action, but specifically postpone the specific language of that resolution to the traditional votes and comments. That would be my suggestion, anyway. Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you just repeat that again, if we're going to move?
Yeah.
Not the final language?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I think that with my situation, I don't have a conflict. We move favorable action generally. Depending on the specific content of the resolution, which we would do under votes and comments later, I may or may not have to recuse myself at that time, but we don't, you know, know what that is yet.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Schlickman, for bringing this forward again. I note that last year, it was Article 66 as well, so coincidentally, it's going to have the same number. I, you know, agree with the issues in terms of the service and speaking out on this. I think the resolution, for me, as a member of the Select Board, there's some language in here that if I were to do it, I might change or take it out. And specifically, I'm not sure I would pinpoint the City of Quincy in my resolution. I think that the real issue here is that the 14 communities that were part of the Metropolitan Transit Authority back in 1947 pay 82% of the assessment. I don't think there's one of those 14 communities. Quincy wasn't. And so there are issues that we have in common with some other communities. Boston, Cambridge, and Brookline pay the highest assessment. Where, it's all based on population, and it's by a factor of nine for the remaining 14 communities. And then, when the MBTA was created in 1964, there were additional communities added. Those communities don't pay as much. I think that's an area that's certainly worth exploring with others of the 14 communities. I would be a little reluctant just to target Quincy in this, in this resolution. I realize what they're served by and that the number stations. And so, while personally, I don't have a problem with this, and for purposes of moving forward, I think I would be inclined to move favorable action. I'm not doing it yet. But I also think it raises a larger question when you have a resolution before Town Meeting, and this clearly affects Arlington. And it just feels like this type of thing should go right to Town Meeting, because unless we're going to wordsmith it, and I don't really want to take, change Mr. Schlickman's words around, I think there's, you know, maybe something to be explored with the moderator, where there is something that's related to Arlington. Is there a way to just get it before Town Meeting so that if we make changes and Mr. Schlickman wants to bring a substitute motion, he doesn't have to? And I think this is the only resolution this year. Maybe it's a good opportunity to talk to the moderator to see, when something like this is put before the body, do you really need the Select Board to weigh in? I mean, you know, we may want to do it individually. And again, certain things I might change. I wholeheartedly agree. We have issues. We'd like to work more with the MBTA. And there's broader issues in terms of the assessment that I think we can work through, or attempt to work through with some of our neighboring communities. So just really a comment on that. But thank you for bringing this forward.
My colleagues?
I feel like I'm jumping in front of Lynn all the time.
Mrs. Mahan?
I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. DeCoursey's remarks regarding resolutions. Not to be sarcastic, I know this is the second year. I'm assuming we're not going to see this every year, because I think it might take away from the message it's trying to convey. But the other thing is, as I said before, with not going special Town Meeting wrote on the MBTA assessment, when I was reading this language in light of the remarks that I want to make under new business and conversations that I've had and various members of the Select Board have had regarding the MBTA assessment, which we pay more than Milton, I believe we pay more than Braintree, besides just Quincy. We pretty much pay more than anybody else. And I think my remarks that I want to say of steps moving forward on perhaps addressing the MBTA assessment, which I would say on a new business, I don't think it falls under this. But the reason I'm, I'd like to bring it up and then say what my concern is. But I'm fine with the resolution going before Town Meeting. I agree, in terms of, you know, maybe we need to streamline the process. In this, you know, the board has a resolution they want to, just so that there's not an extra stop along Paul's trailway, railway, for resolutions and others moving forward. Yeah. But, and again, it's a resolution, so I'm not going to, you know, stand on the top of the hill and say, I'm going to fight this to the whatever. But I do think there are a step or steps regarding our MBTA assessment that we'll have future discussions on. In this resolution, I don't think, unless somebody took it word, unless the MBTA took it to heart, word-for-word. And I just don't see that happening. So I guess, is there no motion right now?
That's for no motion.
There's no motion. Okay. I'd be interested in Mr. Dickens. I feel like I'm always taking away.
That's fine. That's fine. I'm happy to last. I mean, I'm happy to say less. And certainly, I just want to make it easier on the chair since, you know, I am removed. Well, you all know my posture towards, I mean, resolutions in general. I mean, I kind of said that if there are going to be a bunch of them, you know, like, my high-water point is going to be abstain. I think partly it's because the BLM resolution just left a bad taste in my mouth, because I think, to a large extent, these resolutions can be crafted in a way that does it the service, I mean, to Town Meeting, it almost dares Town Meeting not to have a nuanced, I mean, discourse. First off, you only get seven minutes on both sides. So it's really hard to have a meaningful discourse. And so, who wants to vote against apple pie? Look, the T is doing all it can to make service better, for everyone. If you look at the Board of Directors, either in meetings or the slide decks, you'll see the great efforts that are being made, strides that are being made. And it's in a tough position. It's been, and it's, yeah, it's gotten into a really tough position. It's going to take it a while to work its way out of it, but making, making good progress. And so, if we could do this resolution year after year, and one of these years is going to sync up with the T coming out of it, and then we'll be able to say, oh, the resolutions did it. But it really would have been more of a correlation than a causation. With respect to assessments, Mr. DeCoursey has laid out the problem very well. For a while, I was under the strong impression that when Fall River came online, we were going the south coast expansion of the commuter rail, that we would, that the T would then take on the reassessments, because we'd have more communities being serviced by the MBTA. When I talked to Senator Crichton, one of the co-chairs of the Transportation, the Joint Transportation Committee, I mean, about a year ago, he was not aware of anything with respect to having, with respect to assessments. I've kind of touched on the topic a little bit with the Executive Director of the MBTA Advisory Board. That is someone also that was just that we have come to meet with us. We tried to get the Chair of that body to meet with us. He tried twice. There was an illness in one case and a death in another case. We could try with him again, but Brian Kane, the Executive Director, is, I think, more easily available. I think he could give us some guidance as to how to potentially move the assessments issue. I will add to that, though, that the Governor has set up a transportation funding task force. And that's for statewide. And I think that would be a good place, you know, to have the discussion about assessments in general and other ways. in general, and other ways, funding transportation and transit. So I'll just offer, because I am going to vote, I would like, let's go with Mr. DeCoursey. Like, maybe we could just bypass Select Board completely on this, and maybe on resolutions in general, because that mostly can abstain for me on this. But I will offer you this in all earnestness, that I will be happy to work with you, to have people talk with us, in large groups or small groups. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have regarding any, like, future endeavors to make the T better. And I'll leave you with this, and that kind of concerns the 79 to a certain extent. 79, it's very unlikely that it's coming back, especially when you take into account that one of the big initiatives now that the T is taking is to provide half fares for low-income riders. And that's going to cost the T probably about $30 to $50 million in about five years. And chances are, low ridership, I'm roots, like the 79, just aren't going to come back. The resources can be shifted towards that. And I guess I did say one thing. I'll just throw in another point, too, about the school buses. I don't know who ever thought it was a good idea to take out school buses and use public transit instead. I can appreciate that maybe schools were stretched to provide transportation, and that was a way of shifting that financial load onto public transit. But you're taking the rush hour period, and then you're putting this bike rush on top of it. There's just no way you can provide the capacity, you know, to do that. You know, I can think of other ways to do it, and if I wouldn't put it on public transit alone, it's just asking for trouble, and we got trouble. That's it. Thanks.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just, you know, there's a history here, Mr. Diggins, that the MBTA actually used to provide special school bus services to the town of Arlington. And I'm dating myself. You learn today what year I was born. Now, I was going to high school in the late 70s, early 80s. And the Almont Bus, I lived up at the Heights, the MBTA used to provide a dedicated school bus to the town of Arlington. They did it at the Audison, and they did it at the high school when Mrs. Mahan and I were at the high school, and then Proposition 2 and 1/2 came along. So, and again, we're not going back to those days, but there was a long history in our community for the T recognizing, okay, we're not going to fill up the 77 bus with students as it goes up and down Mass Ave. We'll provide a bus at 210 from Arlington High School. There was a period where the Audison, they provided a dedicated bus. So that was a history. It's a long, long time ago, but it's, you know, things were different back then. But I want to go back to the assessments. And I really, we had Mr. Jamison in recently. We've heard from Mr. Toasty. Mrs. Mahan has spoken about it over the years, and I think we're going to hear from her again tonight. And again, just a little history lesson, the Boston Elevated Railway became the Metropolitan Transit Authority in 1947. We happen to be one of 14 communities. Based on service that was in place in 1947 in those communities, that has dictated the percentage that we pay on our assessment. And look how the T has changed since 1947 and 1964 and throughout the years. We pay a multiple of many other communities. And when you look at the MBTA Enabling Act, which is Chapter 161A, there are still 14 communities defined. Those 14 communities are the original MTA communities. There's another 51 communities that are identified. And then beyond that, to get up to 178 or 175, whatever it is, there's other served communities. And with the assessment, while we're only, we're talking 8% to 10% of the T's budget, I think the total assessments to local communities is $193 million. Boston pays half of that. Our share for next year will be about 2% of that. That, to me, is a real discussion that should be had about, you may have been fined in 1948 to pay a higher percentage, but the service to Arlington relative to other communities, and there's other communities that are similarly situated, too, that should be a discussion for the legislature to take a look, how is this being allocated? And that's why I mentioned my concern. I wouldn't, as I said earlier, I wouldn't point directly at Quincy. I'd point at the definition of the communities. And I'd like an opportunity maybe to talk to Mr. Schlickman after the meeting, between meetings, maybe to suggest some changes with that paragraph, because I think there's a way to maybe add a little bit more there that points to what I would consider the unfairness to the 14 communities as part of the overall discussion. Thank you.
So at this point, I note that we don't have a motion on the table. I know Mr. Schlickman has his hand raised, but I'll check to see if my colleagues want to go now before we get back to Mr. Schlickman.
I'll make a motion for favorable action and to kind of jump on the history bandwagon. And then, Mr. Schlickman, I think it was, I know it was after Proposition 2 and 1/2. I think it was 1999. I think there were about 78 other communities that were coming into the T at the time. It's pretty well-known anecdotal history in the State House that the person, Senator who represented Milton, Quincy, and Braintree, had a position of authority in setting the assessments. And basically, it's been pretty well-known for 20-plus years that, you know, in my opinion, from what I've been told, Arlington really is carrying, because of what came out of the State House and that particular person who was chairing the process at the time, we're really paying a good amount of Milton, Braintree, and Quincy's portion. And I think, and I'll just again discuss it under New Business, there's a way, I think there are ways to address that, but I certainly think there's a way that this board has been sort of discussing a little more diligently or with a little more earnestly over the past two to three years. And I'm fine to move approval on this resolution. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Mrs. Mahan, just to clarify, is your motion just to move approval of putting the resolution before town meeting, but with content to be voted later by the board?
Yes. And I would, I know Mr. Schlickman has his hand raised. I would encourage, especially on that Quincy, I agree with that, too. I don't know if that gets reworked or whatever, but I know I would do something to it. But anyways, so I would encourage and hope that Mr. Schlickman and Mr. DeCoursey have the opportunity to speak about that. And I'll just give my thoughts offline at another time to Mr. DeCoursey about that. Thank you. So just general move approval, not specific language.
Thank you. Appreciate that. For the comments, Mr. Schlickman?
Yeah. First of all, the purpose of the Quincy paragraph is a discussion of equity in that I think that Arlington really deserves the opportunity to get what it pays for. I'm not as concerned with the amount we're paying, but for the getting our money's worth and getting the subsequent value relative to what we're contributing. And that's sort of the point. And I'm very happy to work with Mr. DeCoursey to come up with some language that the board would be more comfortable with. Quincy's just an easy example, because they're a bigger city with a much larger population and considerably more service, and they're assessed at a lower rate, because that's just the most vivid and visible example I can come up with. And the assessment rates are in state law, so it's a matter of calculation. Calculate the number of people in a municipality and multiply that by a given factor, and then assess that by the assessment rate, which keeps going up. Now, as for the student transportation, this has been a mission of the MBTA since it came to be. And first of all, Massachusetts law does not require districts, school districts, to provide transportation for grade 7 through 12 unless you're in a regional district. And students in Lowell have T passes from the Lowell Regional Transportation Authority, and the buses line up at the high school and work their way out from there at the end of the school day. Every student in Boston who is transported has a T pass, and everybody who has a T pass buys the T pass. And our students are buying a T pass to use the MBTA, and this is what has gone on historically since the MBTA came into business. This is just an element of the MBTA failing to meet their responsibilities that has been a traditional purpose for them to provide services to us as well as students throughout the region. That's why we view it as an issue that the MBTA has turned their back on something that we've relied upon them to do for generations, and that dumping the problem in our laps, where we've got parents who are so angry that their kids aren't coming to school in town, and that we can't get the MBTA to respond. This is the issue why we ended up instituting a bus with user fees. And it's troublesome for us. We don't have the bus infrastructure to go and run a parallel bus service. MBTA has made a commitment a long time ago to be a partner with the school districts within the MBTA service area, and they should be held accountable. I am very grateful to the board for supporting this effort. I hope we're not back here next year. I hope that we have communication with the leadership of the MBTA and the State Department of Transportation. I'm more optimistic this year than last year. But I think some element of success would be for us to all work together to bring the T into town, to make us more of a priority rather than just turning our hands up and saying, well, what are we going to do? The T's got problems. We'll let them solve their problems, and then we'll think about what happens in Arlington. If Arlington does not advocate for Arlington, nobody's going to advocate for Arlington. And right now, anytime I've seen any discussion in the MBTA over the past couple of years, I have not seen once the town of Arlington even mentioned. And I think we need to change that. I really do.
Thank you, sir. So at the moment, we have a motion. We do not have a second, so...
I'll second Mrs. Mahan's motion.
Okay. Further discussion?
Well, I don't agree with much of what Mr. Schlickman said, but the way it was put makes me feel that it's not really worth arguing at this point. But all I will say is that I am willing to work, to try to reach out to folks that I think could be helpful in at least getting some answers, and maybe even moving things a little forward with respects to assessments. But I will not be supporting the motion.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So we have, I guess I'll, I've been moving along and not making my own comments, which is fine. But I do want to say I have great sympathy for the motivation and sentiments, you know, behind the motion. I think that, I'm intrigued by Mr. DeCoursey's suggestion that as a potential new precedent and something worth exploring with the moderator and with town council outside of this meeting would be, you know, resolutions, to me, are the voice of town meeting speaking. And, you know, I feel that the board does have a responsibility to issue advice to town meeting about what we think they should do. That's the whole point of a recommended vote. I think that it's different when it's a non-binding resolution that's really intended to be a corporate expression of opinion by town meeting. And it feels, it always felt a little bit disproportionate to me that the Select Board would be asked to do this. And as Mr. DeCoursey pointed out, that creates some procedural bottlenecks. If the proponent, quite justifiably, doesn't like how we monkey with the resolution, then they have to go through the trouble of doing a substitute, and that implies a conflict that's just not usually there. It's really more of a question of role. And so I think that'll be an interesting question. And Mr. DeCoursey, I would welcome you to take that up with the moderator, Attorney Cunningham, at your leisure to maybe provide guidance back to the board when we take this up for final votes and comments.
Would you like me to do that before the end of April, Mr. Chair?
I think that would be an excellent idea, actually. Even more so before this comes back to us for final votes. So soon would be great. Thank you. Attorney Cunningham. Looks like he's... Yep. I think our town council is frozen in Zoom at the moment.
Well said, Mr. Chair. I just want to stress that I'm happy to... Sorry, Mr. Chair. Am I on now?
Yes.
I just want to say, obviously, well said, Mr. Chair, but I'm happy to follow up with the moderator and the board regarding possible ways forward on the issue of resolutions.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's go back to my notes here. So we have a motion for general favorable action with content of the resolution to be voted later by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey. Ms. Mar?
Mr. Diggins?
No.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
It's a 3-1 vote.
Thank you very much. Okay, that ends the warrant article hearings. Brings us to item 15, correspondence received. We have an informational memo. This suggests no action, but informs the board of the work that the town proposes to undertake in response to the Broadway crosswalk request. And that is from John Alessi, Senior Transportation Planner. I'll move, turn to the board.
Move receipt. And I want to thank our Senior Transportation Planner, Mr. Alessi, for his memo to us that right now there is no immediate action to be taken on this, but that's because, as he points out, there are conversations and considerations and recommendations being formulated for the streetscape improvements, which are planned later this year. And he has indicated that that's where this and other intersections along Broadway, all the way down to Sunnyside, North Union Street, will be addressed. So while it's initially, it seems no action, it's not, because we already have an action and something's about to come out to address that. So a long way of saying move receipt.
You know, thank you for that elaboration. I think that's a good service to the public there.
Second.
Any discussion? Further discussion, I should say? Okay, so we have a motion receipt by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey. Ms. Mar?
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
A 4-0 vote.
Thank you very much. That brings us to New Business. Excepting cases of emergency, the board will neither deliberate nor act upon topics presented in New Business. And with that, we will turn to Ms. Mar.
No New Business. Thank you.
Attorney Cunningham.
One piece of new business, Mr. Chair. Excited to announce that we have found and offered and retained a new deputy town council for the town of Arlington. Jacqueline Munson was a very, we're very excited to have Attorney Munson come on board. Most recently, served as Corporation Counsel for the City of Boston. Very distinguished attorney and very qualified. And we're very excited that Attorney Munson will be joining the town probably sometime in mid-March. And special thanks to Human Resources Director Karen Malloy and her staff for really, you know, conducting this search. We had some excellent candidates in the end. It was a difficult choice, but Attorney Munson is a real standout. We're happy to have Jacqueline join us.
Excellent news. Thank you, sir. Mr. Feeney?
No New Business.
Ms. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding, Mr. Jamison was here at our last meeting, and I know we've been having conversations, some of us ad infinitum, all the way back to Mr. DeCoursey's Finance Committee days regarding the assessment. I have had conversations with the town manager and town council as recently as today, including, God bless you, you're on vacation, Attorney Cunningham, but I've still been bothering you about where Mr. Jamison correctly pointed out that there's another new factor under the MBTA Communities Act, that Communities Overlay District Act, that Arlington is now officially labeled as an adjacent community, whereas Milton, Quincy, Braintree are commuter rail or rail trail, the CTRT. And we're just adjacent community with bus service that has been, they don't point out this point, but drastically cut, as well as... as, uh, limited. And, uh, and Mr. Jamison did ask us to look into the possibility of either putting something in the, uh, regular town meeting or a special town meeting, but after conversations, um, uh, as the town manager pointed out, that the formula is codified by state law under a statute that, um, of course, the board could put something in a warrant, but it really, um, would, would not be the correct route, or the direct route, um, to address this. And I did have conversations last year with, um, Representative Garbely about, since it is a state statute that governs the assessment. And I understand there's a formula, but there's something wrong with the formula. There's, there's still that state house, everybody knows it, and nobody really says it publicly. I mean, I'll pick on the city of Quincy, just because Mr. Schlickman has pointed it out. If you go by,